And anybody who's trained with you?
Yay. And my mother and my son, my sisters.
You're welcome to come to the table. Colleen has been the accounting manager, the interim finance director, and the finance director. She has been in those positions ever since she came with us. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Colleen M. Conroy, who on March 1st, 2021, retired from employment with the City of Albemarle after 25 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Colleen, you've done so much for us. Thank you very much, and I'm going to give you the microphone so that you can talk.
Will this be my mom? I'd first like to tell the citizens of Albemarle that it has been my honor and privilege to serve you for the last 25 years. I appreciate council putting up with me for all those years. I thank Bob Stewart for hiring me to begin with, and Joyce Almond for teaching me some things along the way. You're left in wonderful hands. Jacob Weevil is the new finance director. I've worked with him. He's going to do a fabulous job. People of Albemarle know that your management team are dedicated people. They care about this city and want to do the very best for you. It was my honor to work with them as well. Michael, we've had a lot of good times. A few maybe not so good. But thank you for all your support over all these years. I just really appreciate it. And Marla, I'm sorry, but I love you, Michael. So I just want to, once again, thank everyone. I want you to know I appreciate each and every one of you, all the work that you do. And thank you.
I want you to introduce your mom.
This is my mom. My mom turned 100 years old in August. I think it's probably not many people who get to have their mother with them at their retirement. I am blessed. This is my son Kevin. He grew up here, went to Albemarle High School at NC State. And my sisters are back here. One sister from California, one from Pennsylvania. And my dear love Dean is also here. But I'm just so thrilled to have my mama with me.
Believe me, I'm very proud of my daughter.
Colleen, thank you very much. You've done a lot for our city. We sure will miss you. And it's fun and pleased to see all of your family with you. Thank you.
Colleen said her mother's probably going to be in the pool at the YMCA tomorrow.
Let them do their business. Yes, Kevin's got it.
Next, Lisa Kaiser is going to come forward and tell us about the Central Lina Regional Council Award, COVID-19 Resiliency Award for Remote Learning Center at EEYDL Community Center.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Ferris. So Parks and Recreation is the proud recipient of the 2021 Central Lina Regional Council COVID-19 Resiliency Award. And this award is given for the EEYDL Community Center Remote Learning Center. So just a little bit of history about how we came to this point. We stopped doing programs in March, but then we did summer camp to help those parents with childcare. I mean, we always do summer camp, but we were able to do that last year. And Brent, Brent Philpott here. Brent and I, well Brent said, Lisa, they've decided not to do, they've decided to do a hybrid school. So there are going to be those families that were going to choose remote learning. Can we do something at the EEYDL Center? So we came up with a plan. And so Brent and I met with Michael and Nikki to get their thumbs up and support for the program. Then we brought it to you guys here, and you guys gave us the support for that. We applied for the CARES Act grant to help support recreation, YMCA's, Boys and Girls Club to help with these remote learning centers. And we received $31,300 to help fund this and support this financially. So the goals of the program were to support elementary and middle school students during the remote learning, to provide a structured environment for learning, to provide a means of socialization, and also to provide recreational activities to help relieve the stress of the pandemic. And I would say that we definitely achieved all of those goals plus some. So we received this resiliency award. Someone pass this around and let you guys look at that. But we don't do it alone. So Brent and his staff were, they did all the work and they invested all the time in our children at the EEYDL Center, at the Remote Learning Center. I don't know if I have any other staff here, but we all. Todd, if you'll stand up. Todd and his staff support us from a maintenance aspect and cleaning aspect. So we all work as a team. So when one person wins this award, we all win this award. So I'd also like to recognize Michael and Nikki for their support and believing in our vision of this program. To city council for the same reasons. To the IS staff, the information systems staff. They definitely were the backbone for our technology. So thank you, Owen and your staff. Dana and her staff or HR for helping us get the staff and the recruitment for staff and the ordering. And then I'd also like to represent, recognize the school system, Stanley County Schools. I see Melissa here, and if there's anybody else here. Vicki, you guys will stand up too, because this award is for you guys as well. So I'd like to show, and this, I think, is a minute, minute and a half of the award presentation that happened last Wednesday.
And if I might, this happened at the annual meeting of the Central Lina Council, what used to be called Central Lina Council's Government, at the Central Lina Region Meeting, which is an annual meeting where delegates from all nine counties and all 65, potentially 65 member local governments. And that's who these folks competed against, was all of those. Nine counties people and 65 local towns. So it was presented last week.
Thank you, Tom. This year's special causes and community health awards are giving to recipients of their community's health and safety. Come adversity, continue services, and promote safety during the pandemic. They're recognizing three awardees who were nominated across our various award categories. First award goes to the Remote Learning Center at EEYDL Community Center in Albemarle. One of the biggest challenges the past year was determining how to educate children safely. But Albemarle Parks and Recreation staff learned that educating children would not happen in classrooms. They rallied together to create options to support the community. In September 2020, the Remote Learning Center was created at the EEYDL Community Center, staffed by the department. The center provided children with a support system for education, social growth, and physical activity in the remote learning environment. It focused on children who were at risk of falling behind without the structure, resources, and support they would get in the classroom. Albemarle Parks and Recreation received support and praise from the Stanley County Schools for this innovative and collaborative approach that ensured continuity of learning during uncertain times.
When they say it takes a village, we definitely rallied around as a village to support these children during this time. So thank you.
Well, I think the name of the award sums it up. Resiliency Award. It's taken a lot of resiliency to get from a year ago to now, and we could not have done it without this partnership. We applaud Parks and Rec and Brent. He is a visionary, if I've ever seen one. And I remember sitting down with you at EYDL a year or so ago, and you rolling this out. And it was like, we need this. This is what we need to help our children. So fingers crossed, we'll get test scores back in a couple of weeks, and we know that they made progress because they were in your very capable hands. So thank you all.
Thank you. Melissa, you want to say anything?
Oh, no, she did a wonderful job. Yes, I have really fallen in love with EEYDL even more. And I think I'm just grateful to have met Mr. Brent because she's right, he has a vision, he brings it into fruition, and our children are blessed because of it, and we thank you for it. Okay, so we thank you all, this is our family.
Thank you, and thank you, the staff. Number four is our National Public Works Week proclamation. Is Ross back there? Come on forward, Ross, and bring all of your staff with you. Bring them all up front, let them be recognized. Come on, guys, you can't hide, come on.
Mayor and councilmen, while they're coming up. What I'd like to do is just talk briefly about the National Public Works Week. It's sponsored by the American Public Works Association, APWA. So we refer to it as APWA. And what I'd like to read is just a little bit of what you have in your agenda packet. The American Public Works Association is proudly announced, "Stronger Together" as the theme for the 2021 National Public Works Week, which is this week, May the 16th through the 23rd. And the reason I find that ironic is those words, "Stronger Together," doesn't, it doesn't ring any truer than the group that I have the pleasure to work with. We touch a lot of people, and not just the city, but also the county, and also within our own city departments. Public Works helps maintain the community strength by working together to provide the infrastructure of services and transportation infrastructure, fleet maintenance, stormwater management, public buildings and grounds maintenance, solid waste and recycling services, and right-of-way management. And I'll also throw in their warehouse inventory. We have to, I think we've got one here. I have to throw them some credit too. But with all that, Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders of the city and other departments within the city in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services throughout the city of Albemarle. So with that, I'm not sure who reads the proclamation.
Well, I was going to ask you two, but if you don't have it with you, I'll ask Ms. Hall.
As I bring it up, it's a good thing it's on my screen here. I probably couldn't read it off that one. "National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 16th through 23rd, 2021. Stronger Together. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Albemarle, North Carolina. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our community's transportation infrastructure, fleet maintenance, stormwater management, public buildings and grounds, solid waste and recycling services, and right-of-way maintenance that is essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Albemarle, North Carolina to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now or never, the Albemarle City Council will hereby designate the week, May 16th through 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our community health, safety, and quality of life. Proclaim this the 17th day of May 2021, City of Albemarle, by, I guess, the mayor will sign."
Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. Motion by Councilmember Oliver II, by Councilmember Townsend for a discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Gentlemen, and we have one lady that came tonight. She's not the only lady in Public Works, but she is the only one here tonight. Thank you very much for all you do. We appreciate you and all you do to keep our streets moving. Ross, if you would stay right there, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is recognize the NC State University Road Scholar Program graduates.
We'll move right along into this, and then hopefully some of this crowd might weed out here. To give you a little bit of information, in the street division part of the Public Works Department, we do have some fortunate ways of training and educating our staff. LTAP, or NCLTAP, what we call it, is the Local Technical Assistance Program of North Carolina. It was established back in 1982 by the Highway Federal Administration. And North Carolina was one of the first centers to open up their operations in 1986. The mission of LTAP is to help local agencies recognize new technology, information, and training so they can operate more efficiently and safely. The LTAP centers provide access to training and information that may not otherwise be accessible. One of the LTAP programs that is offered out of North Carolina State is the Road Scholar Program. So the Road Scholar Program allows local government agencies in North Carolina who have the responsibility for street and road and right-of-way maintenance to have access to training capabilities at an affordable price. The Road Scholars and Advanced Road Scholars Programs provide special training programs administered by the North Carolina LTAP that allow local government agencies access to high-quality training for their employees. As budgets are always tight, cities and towns need to provide this training in an efficient, cost-effective manner. Specifically, the Road Scholars Program is the first level of recognition, which provides a curriculum of training to enable transportation workers to study road fundamentals, safety, drainage, snow and ice removal, and also training management programs. Being a Road Scholar can help employees develop professionalism and advance in their careers. Courses can be taken in order from any level at any time, and you must meet the requirements of a Road Scholar first in order to move on to receive the recognition of an Advanced Road Scholar. To become a Road Scholar, our employees have to take at least seven courses out of the 25 that they offer. So at the minimum, they have to go through seven of these courses. My goal is to move forward with other employees to continue their credentialing and meet these educationals. The last year was a struggle with COVID. We had several employees take some online training. Normally, these trainings last from one day to two days. So without further ado, tonight, I'd like to recognize our two newest Road Scholar recipients. I think we have three others in the street division now. But the two newest ones are Doyle Hadley and Kevin Luther.
Here, come on up, gentlemen. Come on up, guys. Bring, tell me if you've got somebody you want.
Doyle has been an employee of the City of Albemarle for over seven years now. He's a dependable and reliable worker, and he's probably the most versatile employee when it comes to operating a lot of our equipment. Currently, he's our trailer truck operator. So if you see him out at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, this is the guy that's doing that job. He keeps our city streets really clean. Kevin Luther is a pretty versatile employee himself. Not only does he know to have the knowledge of road maintenance and drainage and right-of-way maintenance, but he's also our downtown top guy that takes care of our downtown properties, sidewalks, trash cans, benches, our yards, landscaping, those type of things. He's been with the city almost six years now. So both of these guys play vital roles in the street division with their talents that they bring and their work ethic shows. And I'm just pleased to have them with us, and hopefully they're going to set the example for others to follow as they move forward. So anyway, guys, here's your trophy hats. And I appreciate it. And here's your certificates with a letter from James Morton. And he's the president over at the industry program.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you to all of Public Works staff for coming out tonight. It's good to see you.
Boy, it's amazing how a couple of presentations bring out the people, didn't they leave?
Moving to number six, consider approval of the May 3rd, 2021 regular enclosed meeting minutes. Motion by Councilmember Oliver II, by Councilmember Louder for a discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a couple of public hearings. The first one is ordered 2119 to rezone 1611 Almond Street from General Highway Business District to R10 Residential. I have a conflict with this, so I'll ask council to, excuse me, because I own property directly across the street from this location. And it made a motion.
Do you want me to?
Motion to refuse. There was a motion by Chris Whitley to refuse.
If the motion, if the motion is about you, you probably don't need to accept that motion.
I think I do until I leave the public hall. Motion by Councilmember Whitley II for Councilmember Oliver for a discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Hall?
Ellie, since I didn't know I was going to be doing this, but just now, we just found. We'll be sure we get all the lines. Thank you, Mayor Michael, Mayor Pro Tem Hall, and members of council. The first public hearing tonight is a zoning map amendment request for tax parcel 155, D Book 1641, page 827, from General Highway Business District to R10. That's our general residential district. Mr. John Honeycutt is present to introduce himself to council as well as this application. As Mayor Michael noted, this is 1611 Almond Street. It's approximately a quarter of an acre. The petitioner has stated in their application that they request a rezoning because the property has always been residential, but is zoned GHBD due to the proximity to US 52. The property is located within an established neighborhood, and in order to complete the renovation of the property, it must be rezoned. In terms of the background and existing use, this lot is platted in the Morgan and Eford subdivision. That original plot was from 1927. The home was built approximately in 1935, but has been vacant since the early 2000s. It has not had an active utility account since 2002. So due to this prolonged discontinuance of use in General Highway Business District, it does require a rezoning to residential to be legally presumed per 92.022 of City Code. The owner does intend to use this as a single-family dwelling. Looking at the zoning map, which I'll pull up, to the north, south, and west of this parcel, you will find General Highway Business District. However, one block up, you have R8, and across the street, you have R10, which is the petitioner's requested zoning district. These other parcels along the same side of the street are similarly zoned and existing residential. However, they haven't been discontinued in use, so those are legally allowed to continue as is. The 2028 Future Land Use Map, with this property being that star, designates this area generally along located major thoroughfares such as 52 as commercial. That is the red that you'll see on this map, with the surrounding area east of this parcel here zoned as general residential. That is defined as areas located within the city's corporate limits where public utilities are provided. Areas classified as general residential typically consist of lots ranging in one quarter to one-half acre in size and have an established network of roads that are well-connected, but often lack sidewalks. The general residential classification also features areas of low-density development that set aside significant natural vistas, parklands, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. Development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity, impact on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features, and availability of adequate infrastructure. This parcel is not currently in any regulated floodplain or watershed. So moving along to staff comments here, all public hearing notice requirements have been met for the May 6th Planning Board meeting as well as tonight's city council meeting. Those are attached after the application in your packets provided. And staff has not received any additional inquiries between the planning board meeting and this meeting from the public. So looking at the broad definition of GHBD that is intended to serve commercial activities which function relatively independent of intense pedestrian traffic and should not be located in the central business district or neighborhood business district. GHBD shall be located along state and federal highways and other highways designated as major streets and should be established in zones of two acres or larger. That is what this parcel currently is. In terms of permitted uses within that district, that's, you know, mostly high-intensity commercial uses, and you do see some low-intensity and contained industrial uses permitted in this district with the CUP. The applicant has petitioned to go to R10. The definition of that is to emphasize a priority on quiet residential neighborhoods well outside of the urban core of the city and outside of the watershed and other environmentally sensitive areas, but still well-connected to collector streets with easy access to larger city. This low-density district features small variation in housing types, but overall maintains predominantly low-intensity residential character consisting of single-family detached and two-family dwellings with limited home occupations and private and public community uses. It will accommodate residences with access to both public water and sewer. In your packets, you will see a list of the other uses within R10 that are permitted by right, including two-family dwellings. Now, that was a change that we did recently, as well as accessory dwelling units, and some limited commercial uses that may be permitted or office uses that may be permitted with the CUP. Included in your packets are the standard dimensional and setback requirements for the R10 district. This lot and structure is existing, so those would not apply as the structure is existing. And the renovations are fully internal. So given the proposed use, the parcels proposed So given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the Future Land Use Plan and its proximity within an existing neighborhood, there are merits for this proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's Future Land Use Plan. And I will briefly go over the maps and the application, but those are in the back of your packet. And on May 6, Planning and Zoning Board did hear this as a public hearing and unanimously recommended that you all approve this with the adopted consistency statement, which is found on page 5. So this is a photo of the property as it currently sits with our rezoning sign there. As you can see, some vinyl was installed recently, and I believe the roof had been repaired recently as well. The applicant applied for a zoning permit to do internal renovations, which is when this nonconformity was discovered. And I would like to thank Mr. Honeycutt for working with us through this process to help bring his property into conformity. Full picture of the Future Land Use Map, Mr. Honeycutt's application receipt, and copies of the public notice requirements, including the published notice and snap, which includes both of the rezonings on you all's agenda tonight. So I will pull back up to the consistency statement here, and we can introduce Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellie. Mr. Honeycutt, you can speak if you would like. It is a public hearing. You can, but you don't have to.
Well, I was just going to thank Mrs. Oliver. I was just trying to renovate the little house. I wasn't aware, really, that it had been zoned commercial until we started trying to pull the permits. And so, you know, I kind of got myself in a pickle there. So I'm just trying to do the best I can to get out. We're just trying to bring a little house up. It got kind of dis-repaired. I had an opportunity to buy it several years ago, so I did. Finally got a little money together to try to remodel the little house, and maybe I have some of my kinfolk kind of interested in purchasing it. I'm just needing to get these permits and also continue with the work completed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against?
Most of the closed public hearing.
Thank you. There's a motion. Motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, aye. All opposed, the same. Now, I will not make the motion or tell you what needs to be made, fellow members of council, but there is before you, go back to the agenda. If you go back to the agenda, there is an ordinance 2119 which includes the zoning amendment. Is that not clear?
Yes.
What is the pleasure?
I have a question.
Okay.
The adopted consistency statement. The last sentence says council finds the general residential district zoning on this parcel not to be unreasonable, not to be reasonable, and in public interest. Is that what that should say?
Oh, excuse me. That should read, council finds the general residential district zoning on this parcel to be reasonable.
Strike a warren eye.
Yes.
I apologize for that.
You might have to pause the text and then form a motion.
So is there a motion?
So move ordinance 2119. Do you need the zoning map amendment as well?
It's included within that ordinance.
Okay.
And if you will, can you read with the consistency statement? Will you read the correct one?
Very well considered. The zoning map amendment 2006, reasonable tax parcel 155, General Highway, Business District to R10, General Residential District, and with the approval of the zoning map amendment of 2106 with the adopted consistency statement that is right up there on front. Mine is so small, I can't even read with my baccalors.
With the consistency statement, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, the same. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt.
It's good to see people come out and do what you're doing.
That's right. Yes, that's exactly right.
More people with houses like this, to come forward and fix them up and make them available to our citizens. I thank you very much.
Even if it is halfway through, realizing that you...
I learned.
He's doing a great job with it, believe me. I've seen the plans.
Great. Thank you.
Public hearing number eight, ordinance 2120, to rezon 323 Brook Street from Central Business District to Light Industrial. Ms. Shields, would you introduce?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Michael, members of council. This is a zoning map amendment request for 323 Brook Street. This is tax record 17648, D-Book 368, page 972. Mr. Richard Almond and Mr. Randy Malden with Crook Motor Company are here to present this application. The lot is approximately 19,000 square feet, so a little shy of half of an acre. The applicant and owner, excuse me, the applicant is Crook Motor Company with Stokes Construction Company being the owner. And I do believe that they have definitely received notice of this public hearing and have given their consent to the applicants for this rezoning. The existing zoning is Central Business District, and they are proposing a Light Industrial District. The petitioner, in their words, has requested this zoning because Crook Motor Company has leased this property to wash heavy-duty trucks. The electricity was disconnected several years ago, and upon attempt to reconnect, it was discovered that the proposed use is no longer permitted. This property is directly across Light Industrial. So in terms of the property background and existing use, this was utilized as a heavy-duty truck washing station for over 30 years prior to the electricity being disconnected in 2016, and it has since been vacant. This prolonged discontinuance of use requires a rezoning to Industrial to be legally resumed per 92.022 of code. Very similar situation to what was in the previous case as well. And that use would be permitted in LID per 92.106B35. So looking at the current zoning map, to the north, south, and east of this parcel, you will find Central Business District. However, to the west and this side of the block, you will find the Light Industrial District that the applicant has requested. As I mentioned, there are no current utilities on site, two that are available nearby. So the Future Land Use Map here, on the zoomed-out photo, you'll see the star being this property. This classifies parcel south of Old Charlotte Road, which on this map is this road right here. So parcel south of this are classified as industrial. That's the purple that you see on this map. And however, this parcel and the surrounding area is the light blue, which is our city center. That is defined as areas of the traditional and historic center of the city that encompass Albemarle's downtown and contain a variety of office, retail, service, and residential uses. Central to the success of city center are its unique architectural features, historic integrity, attached buildings, but everything in atmosphere, and symbiotic uses. Development considerations include design and use compatibility within the historic urban framework. Your packets also include a definition of industrial and heavy commercial as areas that are intended to accommodate traditional industrial uses and commercial uses, such as warehousing and distribution centers and individual tracts of land located within coordinated industrial parks. Such uses may have health or safety hazards, have greater-than-average impact on the environment, diminish the use and enjoyment of nearby property by generation of noise, smoke, fumes, odors, blare, vibration, industrial vehicle traffic, and similar nuisances. Development considerations include adequate highway access and water and sewer capacity, as well as minimizing impacts to adjoining uses. This property is not located within any floodplain or watershed. So like the other case, all of our public notice have been met for Planning Board as well as council, and we have also not received any calls from neighbors related to this case. We have had free application meetings and phone calls with the applicants, and I would like to thank them for also taking the time to go through this process to bring the property into conformance. So currently, in the city of Albemarle, we have about .2 square miles as a designated CBD district. That's about 1.2% of our available land within the city. Zones that would accommodate this use as an automobile washing establishment include GHBD, LID, which is what they requested, and HID. When you combine all that available land, that's really about 22% of the land in the city that is properly zoned to accommodate this use and is currently existing. So recent tax amendments that were adopted by you all back in 2019 sought to encourage more of a pedestrian-scale city center and eliminated a handful of auto-related uses within the central business district, including washing establishments. So that's what prompted this nonconformity. And that created this nonconforming use, which, due to the prolonged discontinuation, is the reason for this zoning change. I would also like to note that Brooks is currently a substandard city street, and staff does have concerns about this use's impact on increased truck traffic and expanding or encroaching our industrial uses into our city center. We believe that the existing city center parcels and transitioning those to industrial do not reflect the city's downtown development plan as well as Albemarle's comprehensive pedestrian plan that seeks to encourage pedestrian-friendly uses in our downtown core. However, there are currently zoned industrial properties nearby. So the permitted uses within CBD are listed before you all. That's primarily retail, residential, office, commercial, and some uses with a CUP. The definition of Light Industrial is designed to accommodate industries and warehousing operations, which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner, and that will not be obnoxious to adjacent residential and business districts. You'll also find before you all on page four a list of those types of uses that would be permitted should this property be rezoned. There are currently no minimum lot size or setback requirements in CBD. In LID, you'd have 30 feet in the front, zero setback on the side, and 20 in the rear. There is also no maximum height restriction in either of these districts. So given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under our Future Land Use Plan, as well as its location within an existing central business district, staff does find this proposed rezoning to be inconsistent with the Future Land Use Plan. However, at our Planning Board meeting on May 6, they did hold a public hearing and unanimously recommended that you all approve this with the zoning amendment statement. So if I may, I'll go through the remainder of this application, and then we can go back to that statement and what it means and what you all would be approving should you concur with Planning Board. So this is a photo of the property with our public hearing notice. The applicants have proposed no renovations as this was previously a truck-washing establishment. The code will not necessitate for building or fire that there be any plans to reopen this as a truck-washing establishment. A full map of the Future Land Use, as well as the Crook Motor Company application. And towards the end, you will find the public notice requirements that have been met. So going back to the zoning amendment statement, which is what Planning Board unanimously recommended you all include, should you agree with them. This is really a recommendation that says that the parcel in comparison to the Future Land Use Map is inconsistent, that our Future Land Use Map has this as city center. However, it includes a statement how this rezoning is reasonable and it's in the public interest. So those reasons could include that the use as a car wash or truck-washing establishment was existing. That could be something that is cited and being in the public interest. Another thing that could be cited is that there are industrial properties nearby. But I would encourage council to consider this statement and come up on the record with some reasons as to why this particular rezoning is reasonable and is in the public interest because their staff does have concerns about setting precedent in terms of taking existing city center parcels and converting them into industrial. It's just best practice with our Future Land Use that we not be shrinking our core downtown that we have and something that I feel makes Albemarle really special. So I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and if not, introduce the applicants.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Come on up, Richard.
Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to just say, this facility's been here for over 30 years. When things changed a little bit in the economy, we went out to contract and kept this facility because we knew we may have to come back to it. Of course, things have changed, and we were in need of using it. And didn't even realize this had happened under the tax amendment where it had been changed. And I think basically, in the central business district, it dropped it to no washing or no car washes or something like that. But this particular facility was built exactly what it's being used for. It has the pits to reclaim the water. The grease pits are already in there. Already bought the equipment to put in there. So we didn't know anything until we went back to put the power on that this had happened. You know, we come in off of 52, come in by AL Louder's Dean's Ready Mix. We don't come through town. We are respectful of the community. Across the street, you can throw gravel. Bob Garmin's Light Industrial there. You know, going south, all that's Light Industrial. I would like for you all to really take a look at it and then consider it. I would like to say that Ms. Shields has been very professional. She's been a step in the right direction to deal with, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for Ms. Shields or Mr. Almond?
I'd like to bring Ellie back up. So Ellie, if I heard you correctly, so that we don't set a precedent of doing something that's inconsistent, we need to have some findings. Is that correct?
Yes, should council wish to go in that direction, that is what I would encourage.
Your Honor, at the appropriate time, I would place a motion on the table with some findings and ordinance.
Anyone else here to speak for or against?
I'll speak for. I appreciate what y'all do for us. All of our stuff around the community. But these guys are working hard. There's Vayners taking over all the buildings around us. And I do appreciate why y'all have done a crossroad for 52 Old Charlotte Road. Appreciate that. And we want to take care of our area, and that's what these guys are trying to do. We've walked in. The builders are trying to inhabit right now. Have been taking over the Vayners, and they're doing a good job with it. So just go with them.
Question, Bob. Anyone else here to speak for or against? Okay, I'll entertain the motion that we adjourn to public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry. Close to public hearing, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Oliver, you have a motion?
That we approve ordinance 2120 with the inconsistent... The zoning amendment statement that reads, "The Albemarle City Council finds the action to amend Tax Record 17648 from CBD/Central Business District to LID, Light Industrial District, to be inconsistent with the adopted 2028 Land Use Plan. However, rezoning the property will achieve the public interest and shall be deemed reasonable. The aforementioned map amendment shall amend the city's land use plan." The finding that I would offer is that the parcel built... And did you have anything when it was built?
I do not know of that structure.
At the time that the parcel was originally built, it was consistent with what could be built at that time. And the second would be that parcels surrounding this particular parcel in question And the second would be that parcel surrounding this particular parcel in question are that of light industrial as well, is that correct?
Yes.
I would out for those two findings.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Thank you by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Ms. Shields, thank you. I have no agenda adjustments or unannounced allegations. We'll move on into the ministry reports, number nine, a preview of the alleyway design concept.
Drum roll, please.
That's nice.
Go drum roll. Give me a second, I gotta catch my breath, get that mask on. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have our landscape architect consultant, Dan Lambert with McAdams, here to present to you our King Alleyway, the design concept, and also the project schedule for the alleyway. So, the evolution of this design has been very intentional in terms of how it's been built out. From the very beginning, it was very basic, so to allow input from our project team and also the business owners and property owners that are in the portion of the alleyway that's going to be installed with design elements, it was very intentional to keep it basic so we could get feedback from them, and then over time, as we got that feedback, build in the detail. So, the design concept that you're going to see tonight is less than 60% in detail, but again, that's intentional because now we want to get council's feedback, and then the next iteration of that design will incorporate your feedback. We didn't want to go too far with the design and then get in front of the stakeholders, and then they have massive changes. So, your feedback is going to be incorporated in this design, and then you will get that back sometime in June to see it at a 60% details level. As I stated before, we have gotten feedback from those property owners and those business owners there in the alleyway. We had a stakeholders meeting on March 24th, and we got a lot of great feedback, and the design itself changed drastically from their feedback based on what we originally had. So, that was the process to go through with them to get their support and buy-in. Dan is also going to speak to you about the project schedule. The project schedule has changed a lot in the past year since we got first heard about the, what we plan to do in the alleyway. Now, I know it's been talked about for years, but in terms of actually getting the project team together and doing the work, that just started last year, and you got a presentation in July of 2020 from Jonathan Meisenheimer, and at the time, there was some thinking that we'd have this project done by the end of last calendar year. Well, this is the first time that we have rehabbed an alleyway, and it's an old alleyway, and there's old infrastructure there, and quite honestly, there are a lot of things that we're finding out as we go through this process. We have an electrical engineer, a structural engineer, and a landscape architect, and we're learning through this process. So, the next time we have to rehab an alleyway, we'll be experts. So, but to be completely transparent, there's a possibility that the schedule you see tonight, that there will be changes in the future, and I'll give you an example of things that we're learning. So, last week, me, Ross, Pauls Hauser, and Dennis Curley from our electric department, we were meeting, and we got on a phone call with Piedmont Natural Gas, and we found out that Piedmont Natural Gas next year plans to upgrade a portion of, upgrade a gas line that runs into our alleyway. So, when we heard that, obviously, if they're going to do that next year, we plan to do that this year and update the alleyway, that's going to cause a bit of an issue for us. And so, we asked them if they would consider coordinating their schedule with our schedule. They're elevating that up their chain of command, Ross got another call back from our contact with Piedmont Natural Gas, and it sounds like that there is some willingness to work with us, even though there has not been a final determination. But I just offered that up as an example of some of the things that we're learning as we go through this that's causing us to have some delays, but it's not because of lack of effort or lack of trying. The project itself is progressing, there is momentum, and there is a lot of support behind it. So, Dan Lambert again is here from McAdams. Before I hand it over to Dan, I'd like to respectfully and kindly ask that council, hold your questions and your feedback till the very end, sort of take notes as he goes along throughout the presentation. I think it will help in terms of the presentation going along very efficiently. And then at the end of this presentation, obviously ask as many questions as you like, provide feedback. If you see something in terms of an issue or a challenge, please respond or bring that information forward, and we will try to answer your questions as much as we possibly can. There's still some things that, you know, we don't know, but we're going through the process, but we definitely want to hear your feedback and get your input as we move toward the next iteration of the design concept. So, I'm going to hand it over to Dan and let him go through the presentation with you.
Thank you. As Nikki said, my name is Dan Lambert, I'm the Director of Landscape Architecture with McAdams in Charlotte. Do believe we're actually looking at my last slide, however, so we may have to do some rewinding stuff, there we go. I'd like to go over a little bit of what the process is that we've gone through over the last few months, what brought us to today, and then to introduce you to the concept as it stands. As Nikki mentioned, it is a conceptual design at this point. You'll see a certain amount of detail that comes from the input that we've received thus far, along with some creative gestures that we'd really love to get your take on. Again, this is about a 30% design. When we move to that 60% that Nikki mentioned, that's going to involve starting to really look at how this gets constructed. That takes it to a level of construction drawings and starting to figure out the bits and pieces, as she mentioned, there's a good number of them when we're dealing with a highly urbanized historic area like this. So, the process, how did we get here? We had a kickoff meeting of the city staff early in the year. We took a sidewalk that day to really take a look at the scale of the space and then the elements that we're dealing with, and to discuss the city's vision for the space. We took that information back, along with our, with the survey that we did, and went through a site analysis, we looked at the opportunities and constraints involved in the space, the things that would prevent us from doing certain gestures, and those things that are real opportunities to create something unique and special. We looked at a couple of alternatives at that juncture, brought those back to city staff and discussed that, the parts that were speaking to them and the parts that were something to leave behind. From that, we developed a 3D model. The images that you've seen a little bit of already are the more developed version of that model. The early one really gives us a good idea of the actual feelings within the space, how the massing of everything is, what is starting to really speak to a pedestrian scale. And then, we took that city staff, we all, that city staff input, and we had a second meeting with adjacent business owners and got their input, started to hear what their concerns might be, started to make sure that we were addressing their needs and the functionality of this space. What we are converting is very much a useful space for adjacent businesses, they have a lot of their back-of-house services that happen in this space, and that functionality needs to continue despite the shift in overall use of the space. And then we took all those ideas, we revised the concept, and that's what we brought to you tonight. So, here's a look of the entrance to the alleyway looks like. This is from the main street side. The alley itself is really kind of comprised of three different portions. The northernmost portion is what you're seeing here, this is the space immediately behind businesses on Second Street. This is what would become a pedestrian plaza space. Now, each of those businesses, as I mentioned, has a lot of back-of-house function there, therefore their utilities, their, all of their meters, all of their drainage, everything like that comes off the back of these buildings, and kind of creates a little bit of visual chaos, and the kind of things that we don't really want to see in a pedestrian space. So, one of the things that you'll see here is how we've blocked the space from you as you pass with the use of some partition panels, but not completely blocked, these are perforated panels. That way, it doesn't create this element that people can hide behind, doesn't create a security issue there. It's something that, if something's moving behind there, you can see it as you're passing by, but you don't get distracted by the large amount of utilities and visual clutter that happens along the back of the businesses. The first six to eight feet beyond all of those elements, all of those apartments from the buildings, would be a service walkway. That would be maintained to move trash, to move linens, to be able to get deliveries to the back of the building. All of that function would still be accessible in that space, and that still actually leaves a fair amount of space remaining for the pedestrian activities, to turn the rest of that space into an active pedestrian plaza. What you're seeing in this image is an entrance feature, kind of a gateway arch of sorts that currently is labeled King Alley, that's kind of what it's been called on and off throughout here, but naming of it is not 100% either. But it starts to hearken back to the type of materials that downtown Albemarle's used to. There's painted brick that's kind of prominent in the immediate vicinity, metal, and kind of the more industrial aspects of what happened just within the next couple of blocks as you get closer to the rail. You'll notice the light holes, or the power poles that are being brought in. Currently, there is a high number of wires crossing this space. You'll see wires now, but most of those wires are actually string lights. The poles are intended to deliver the service, y'all know about that through the process of trying to get that conversion happening. But you'll see that there are a couple of different scales, several of them currently are shown with security cameras. All of them are shown with banners with the ability to actually identify different seasons or festivals or any kind of programming that you'd like to do with banners in the space. And then, as I said before, they are now the home to string lights, which would light the space in the evenings. You'll also notice a lot of bright color. We're showing a mural on the side of the building that happens to the west of the space. These murals, no artists have been brought into the process yet, these are all conceptual, so it's really just to kind of show the possibility of what could happen there. Here's kind of an aerial view that shows you how the space lays out, and let's see that that service walk follows along this side here, gives plenty of opportunity despite stairs and stoops and air conditioning units and so forth, and that area is accessed in several points, you can cross through it several places, so that they're not completely separated from the space, and if they actually get to a point where they're utilizing that space for events themselves, that's easy for them to pass back and forth to that space. So, it's not a, it's not a complete barrier from one space to the other, but it blocks a good portion of that visual clutter and gives a definite separation of space. It's accessible from the entrance, right around this corner, and the archway that we've proposed is large enough to allow for essentially panel trucks to still be able to access the space when they need to. So, this would still be a drivable alley if and when it becomes necessary, same with emergency services, it allows them to get in there. And it has enough width, it's wider than your standard length, you're trafficable. So, even when we talk about what you're seeing here, which is an artificial turf area, something a little soft, that people can crawl around on, it's shown with cornhole boards right now, but it could be programmed in different ways. It's, we did a project at Waverly in Charlotte, which has a central lawn, that doesn't really have any defined program, but people use it constantly, they love it. They're out there with their kids, running around, rolling on it, kicking soccer ball, just kind of throwing footballs, they're doing all kinds of stuff, and it's a tiny little green space, but it's just enough that the imagination goes in and the safety factor of not being asphalt or concrete comes into play. So, it's something that we looked at here as well. You'll see that there's a lot of greenery, we looked at the opportunity to cut away some of the asphalt and make planters. We don't really have room for full-size trees, but we do have space for small ornamental plants, you see things like grape myrtles here, and then we had opportunity to put planters in there that can be adjusted season to season, moved year to year, if they, if you want to change the order of the space a little, they can be rearranged as well. Above and beyond, I talked about perforated panels, and we'll get to see kind of one of the ways we can play with that in the space, since they are not a full barrier. Those things, if they're arranged vertically, definitely block more space, become much more of a, they tend to be eight foot tall, so that's something larger than a person definitely makes you feel like you're in an enclosed space. When we drop them on their sides and they're only four feet tall, then it's much more of a partition. This separates the space, and it does block a lot of that junk that's at ground level, but at the same time, it still makes it feel like a bigger open space. And when we're in an alley space, despite the fact that this one actually has a lot of width, we don't really want to block that feeling, we want to feel like the whole space is available. That's definitely a better feeling as a pedestrian. So, here we, you'll see that we've incorporated some benches, lots of places to sit, and as we move down, you'll see some taller panels here, which are, one of the things we talked about during our early programming conversations was having iconic Instagram moments, let me just say, places where people want to go to have a picture taken, something that everybody wants to stop and see, and they become familiar with it and kind of becomes synonymous with visiting downtown Albemarle. And so, these panels would be solid panels that could be painted by a local artist to have those opportunities, you know? Angel wings are kind of the ubiquitous one, but there's all kinds of other things showing up these days, but this kind of gives you the idea, someplace that everyone's going to want to stop in and see, you know, at least once in all their life. And just bringing people to the space is really kind of the point in the first place, we want to get as many people out here enjoying it as possible, with the possibility that while they're here, they're going to visit adjacent businesses, they're going to create activity here that ours were typically, that wouldn't be evenings, weekends, we want to get people to the space as many ways as we can. And like I said, plentiful and varied seating, there's opportunity and plenty of width in there to incorporate tables and chairs. Here, I've got a couple of examples of four-seater tables, as well as bistrot style tables. There's currently one restaurant adjacent to this, but who knows what the future might hold, there could be opportunity for coffee shops, things of that nature, and there's a sweet shop down at the other end, so there's plenty of places where you can grab something, go sit outside with it, enjoy it. The space where we transitioned from this pedestrian plaza into the first of the parking plazas is just the right size for one of these fold-out stages. These things come on a trailer, like a tractor trailer essentially, to be backed into the space and then folded up, set up for a stage, so you could host, you know, concert series in the summertime, or individual events could definitely have the opportunity for a stage in the space. And it's the type of thing that when you utilize it in that form, rather than a fully constructed one that's permanent, you can use this at other facilities as well. You know, I know certain municipalities have gone as far as to lease their stage to others so that they essentially pay for it through the leasing of it to other functions. But in that same space, you'll notice behind it, a pair of other poles with a stretched fabric between it, which would be for movie nights. This is another thing where people bring their own chairs and you just say, we're going to be showing whatever, in this case, giving these, going back to my youth, so it shows my age a little bit, but, you know, bring their own chairs, hang out for the evening, and again, this might bring some more interest at ours that are not typically utilized here. And then, as we look at the total of the three spaces, the other two would definitely remain as parking. All three spaces are currently utilized as parking. That northernmost space houses eight spaces currently, and the other two lots in collective can fit 25. That's the current configuration, so we would take away those eight, obviously, because that northernmost would no longer have parking. And then the remaining area, once it's actually cleaned up a little bit, we put some curbs, and we really define the spaces, you go out there and paint those spaces, and we've got 28 spaces still shown there. So, we essentially, we're losing the eight, and the net loss is about seven. So, it, unfortunately, it's a loss of parking, but at the same time, the other reason I wanted to show this is the proximity to other existing parking. There's parking here, there's parking here, there's parking there, there's parking on adjacent blocks in three different directions. The need for parking is probably, it's not as dire as some might say. We've got parking on the street, on Main Street, so, or pardon me, Second, and we actually left it. So, you know, if the feedback comes that people are concerned about parking, there's plenty of opportunities, just kind of reiterate that. And so, now that you've seen that, let's talk a little bit about the next steps, about the schedule, where we go from here. Obviously, tonight's presentation is the start of this list. We are looking at moving into 60% construction documents based upon the comments that we hear tonight. Those will be completed within a matter of just a few weeks. We're far enough along in the concept and with most of this being digital now, that getting from here to there is not nearly as difficult. There's HRC presentation on the 14th of June. The 60% documents will be back to you after their comment and input on the 25th of June. And then from there, we move into 90% construction documents, which gets us to a point of detail where we can actually get some permitting going. So we move into permit submittals after that in July. And then we finalize those construction documents to a point where it's something that you can advertise for bid. We do that in August. And then hopefully by the end of August, we're talking about advertising that bid. That gives us, you know, a month of time before that comes back. We want to get as many good bids as possible. So really right about the 1st of October, we'd be looking at having the low bid that we want to go with versus the lowest bid, hopefully. I'll talk to you all along the process if I can about pre-qualification. When you start dealing with an area like this that has a lot of potential unknowns and pitfalls, when you start opening up asphalt in an old area like this with a lot of utilities, you want a contractor who's done that work before. And when you're set up for a low bid process, sometimes you're going to get that person who just wants to work, who really doesn't have that kind of knowledge. So I strongly recommend that you look into a pre-qualification process. Do not have one established already for this project in particular and other urban projects as you move into the future of dressing up the Central Business District. So with that, the bid opening will be on first. You can negotiate and contract with the contractor over the next couple of weeks. So you could have a notice to proceed as early as mid-October. And then the construction timeframe from that, really in this space should only be a couple of months, barring any other potential unknowns. So that takes you into just across the new year. So we're looking at mid-January 2022 for substantial completion. And then they'll clean up anything that we find in the walkthrough at that point. So we're looking at February next year. What was that? You all have any questions for me?
I noticed on the building to the right, if you look at it here, you've eliminated the doors and put the green area there. Have we talked to the potential new owner, Nikki? My understanding with him is he plans to use those doors and the one on the back.
So we are aware that there is a potential new owner and we're having conversations and we will share this design with them. And like I said, initially, because this is only 30%, there's still opportunity for us to make some adjustments based on the transitional property owners. There's another property owner changing on the other side of the alleyway and this design has been shared with them, so we're having conversations with them.
You'll see the door exists in the model and with some shifting, if that becomes utilized, we can push things forward, back and still make it easily accessible. I didn't talk much about materials, just real quick before. What we're looking at here is not actually brick. We're looking at the potential of a stamped colored asphalt surface. Some of them will save a little money and get you that same kind of character without being a maintenance nightmare. And also we'll save a little bit on budget.
Okay, have we looked at anything of trying to bring in some of the Viper colors?
This conversation, we can introduce that right now.
Okay. And the only other question I think I have is, I have a little bit of concern with the name since we already have a king for Avenue. Especially if we had an emergency call there, we would have two kings. Is that a concern?
No, like Dan said, it was just something that we sort of referred to, you know, because it's just, I guess, the name that people refer to that area, but it's not anything that's set in stone. If we decide that we want to name it, we want to name it Michael Alleyway, you know?
No, thank you.
You know, there's opportunity. This is-
I just don't want to see conflict in this, probably the EMS.
I understand, and so we'll, we'll take note of that and we'll also take note of the doorway and we'll take note of the colors for Viper.
Questions? Mr. Alton?
Well, I heard Councilor Woodley say something about, call it King Plaza. I was thinking through the presentation, just, you know, something pedestrian plaza. You know, just to the mayor's form, we have the King Avenue already, so. Just try to make it something a little bit more polished maybe, whether it's King's Plaza or Pedestrian Plaza. Just think that sounds a little more, you know, that sounds like something people want to go to more than just an alley to hang out, you know?
Would we be in conflict with market station like concerts, movies?
So my feeling is always that we can have more than one space that's similar in terms of event planning and, and I know that there's some opportunity there in terms of having a stage. I don't think that Marketplace or the Depot has a stage. And from what I've been hearing about folks, there's a desire to have a stage, stage access in our downtown so that we can have events that are so much the ones that we're having at City Lake Park. So I don't think that there will be conflict because I'm sure that there is a desire to have that in downtown.
And then to those that will anybody says, we're not doing what we ought to do. We got identification across the board.
Right. And I think with the scale of spaces, you're like two different, you know, sets of programming. I wouldn't envision, this is a much smaller space.
And we're Alton Mall.
Yes.
I just have a couple, just for clarification, just for my thinking. How long have you been involved with this?
I have been involved since December.
December of 2020.
That's correct.
And Nikki, you're the lead on it now, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was not the way it was to begin with, is that right?
No, ma'am.
But you are, thank you very much. And I think both of you mentioned that you had spoken to some adjacent owners, some adjacent property owners.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think I reached out to you because one of them, has anybody followed through or have you heard from the one at the back of the sweet shop?
I have not. Now, when we invited it to the business conference, it was for that front alleyway, that first one.
Right.
The one where we're installing parking, we did not.
Okay.
Because the only thing that really changes there is cleaning up the space and improving the parking. But, you know, if you recommend that we reach out to them, we can. I've not heard back from the one that you emailed me about.
Right. And I don't even know who it was. That came to me through a hand, so. I just, maybe you followed through and like I said, I don't even know who it is. I just know that it's somebody who's been asking me.
Okay, so the person who asked you.
Thank you very much.
So you're referring to this business here?
When you see the-
Sweet Shop.
Yes, correct. The back of the sweet shop. There's an entrance in the building or an opening. Yes, correct. That's right. Just something to think about, and this just came to me, the timing is just amazing. Less than three weeks ago, someone mentioned an artist by the name of, and you may know this, Scott Merkin.
I've heard the name.
Okay.
Yes.
And evidently, he is renowned and has a following that hands down is phenomenal. He go, he has places, if you look him up, it's a while. He does artist renderings across the southeastern United States in towns where certain people grow up. He comes in and does those artist renderings. And just like, I can't even think of the man that does the ceiling paintings different places. And at Montreat, he's got one. This man, Scott Merkin, there are people that just, they go on trips. That's where they go is to wherever he has painted stuff. So, you know, that you've got the big mural or whatever, that might be a place that, we might, because if people come where he, that's a draw in itself.
Definitely. Yeah. It also helps to highlight native sons and daughters like that.
Right.
To really, I mean, this space should speak.
Right.
Should not be, you know, the same as somewhere else. It's got to be something that really-
Screams out.
Yeah.
So Scott Merkin, that just, that name. And you mentioned, Dan, about the pre-qualified contractor.
Yes.
If we look at our time and our calendar, if you can go back there, that would help. So if we are going out for bid on 8/23, then we need to do some, we need to be some, do some secret work on that pre-qualified contractor or whatever the issues are way before that.
Yes, as soon as possible.
So I would just offer to counsel that we only need three more times between now and that bid advertisement. So we probably need to look at that sooner rather than later.
Definitely. And we'd be happy to give you some language that might help you get to that place. It's something, like I said, I recommend highly. This is, as Nikki mentioned, the first gesture you're making in downtown. There's going to be more.
Right.
And you don't want to have that terrible taste in your mouth in the first experience of having a low bid contractor that doesn't know what they're doing. And construction drags out and there's something that makes it all blow up. We don't want that to happen. And then nobody wants to do anything else after that. So taking the extra steps now to ensure that you don't land in that spot is really a gesture towards all of those other projects that are coming forward. And you'll see, you know, you'll see that return immediately in a successful project.
Those are all my questions.
Nikki, have any idea when you will hear from the gas company?
So we talked to them twice last week. I don't know exactly when we're going to hear from them. However, I know that Ross plans to follow up and apparently the contact that we have at Pmont Natural Gas is somebody that we have a really good relationship with. So I don't think that this is going to drag out for a very long time.
I think I have a major impact on your agenda.
Absolutely. You know, we just found that out last Wednesday, so, you know, surprise, surprise. But we'll stay on top of that.
Ms. Wood.
The only thing I want to go back, you mentioned this, but the, you know, I'm looking at the design here and the archways and the poles. And if you look at the fencing that, you know, fences off the HWC units and stuff behind the buildings on Second Street, then you look at the poles that are put beside the building. So there's no concern that if we need to get a fire truck through there, that there'll be room for, to not only get it through there, but for them to operate around it.
Yes, currently between the left-hand archway pole and that first light pole there is 17 feet. So you should have no difficulty getting a vehicle with a standard 12-foot traffic lights.
And the chief, bar chief is?
Bar chief has been, he's, we have a project team and he's like, he's not on the project team, but he, you know, advises the project team. So he's been a part of this. He's been out there on the site visits and he's received these design concepts.
We could get a traditional fire truck in there. We could use a ladder truck because of the lines. And where's the closest place to Alton Mall that y'all have completed a project like this?
Like this one? Unfortunately, you've got to go the other direction to Lumberburg. That was the most recent one.
Whereabouts is Lumberburg?
Downtown Lumberburg. They have a space that was kind of neglected. It was, it was behind their Main Street businesses. And they had a building that they had to knock down and they decided to keep it aside and make it a little pedestrian plaza. And then we designed the space that happens behind it. And it kind of has become their, or it's intended to become their central park of sorts and has multiple functions, farmer's market, movements like this. They've got a concert lawn, they're going to do a band show at the theater. Me and myself, I've been doing these types of projects for 18 of my 21 years. And I'm from Colorado originally, so a lot of my work is out west. But some of my more recent work, it was actually in Burt Beach where I lived for 13 years prior to finding my way to the Charlotte area. And I did the boardwalk.
Oh, yeah.
And so, which has a lot of similar concepts. And it was the backup house for all those businesses on Ocean Boulevard. We had to do a lot of hiding of utilities and creating a space where that's not where your eye goes. So as far as proportion and scale, obviously it's a much bigger space and you've got the ocean on one side instead of another building. But as far as the overall concepts of how to create the flow of passing, being able to pass through it and utilize it for other purposes, but really creating those little nodes, places where people want to stay for a while. It's very much a similar experience. And a couple of the adjacent alleyways that enter the boardwalk are also very similar. I was wanting to eat down the north there. That is, if you were to, if Burrows and Chayman had knocked down their amusement park, it would have very much been this same thing on that scale. But fortunately, now it's got a large field next to it. But then again, they host concerts there and it's highly successful. But we've done similar things in terms of the planning side. But recently in this area, there's not any constructed. So we're getting there. I'm working with the folks in Monroe right now to do something very similar. They actually have an alley that at some point, they built the building into. They kind of took the backs of two buildings and put a wall here and a wall there. And now they want to take that out and do almost the same type of thing. But then the road adjacent to it, they're making it into a pedestrian street, closing off a whole segment of the road. And so working with them in a very similar process and very similar age of buildings and infrastructure, so.
And the only other question I might have is the stage that you had up there.
Yes.
Nikki, is that already put in the financial part of this?
So we, we've reached out to the company that Dan suggested to us for a quote. I've reached out to them a couple of times and have not been able to get a response. I don't have an answer for you in terms of the dollar amount. Did we put that in the original budget? We did not. So we'll have to do some negotiating with that if that becomes a part of the final concept. I will say that there is some given the budget because there are some areas where we see some cost savings. So where we've seen some cost savings, we might be able to add it to, for example, buying a stage. But I don't have a definitive answer about how much it's going to cost.
But that mobile stage, if it's what I think it is, that could be used at multiple, at our, multiple venues that the city owns.
Right. And that's something that the folks on the project team, me and Lisa specifically have talked about because that's something that she's been very strong, strongly about, having that as an asset, not just for the alleyway, but for her other programs.
That's right.
We've utilized that at, in their central space, the same exact stage type.
Right.
It's a smaller trailer that folds out into a 16 by 21-foot stage. So it's a decent space to actually get a full five-feet, six-feet ban over there.
Counsel, any more questions?
I love it that this time next year, we could be Alton Mall.
Hopefully. Hopefully. No more surprises.
Right.
I'm planning that next time this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 10, fifth of year 2021 Public Housing Agency Plan Update. I'm assuming Lee is hiding behind the monitor. There he is.
Mr. Mayor, Project and City Council, good evening. Each year HUD requires departments, agencies and authorities that receive funding to do an annual update of their agency plan. The agency plan consists of three parts. You have the admissions, continuing occupancy plan, called ACOP. You have the administrative plan, which is the Section 8 program and the capital funds. So we've hired or had a consultant work for years as far as updating our plans. And so staff met with the company, NFC, back in March. At that point in time, made our recommendations, reviewed our policies. One thing I will note, our ACOP has not been updated since 2015 and our agency planned 2019. So it's definitely the right time to update this. This 90, our ACOP is 90 pages. And a lot of what is in there is basically HUD language that is required by HUD. But it also allows the agency to look at what the community needs are too and making decisions on admissions and continued occupancy. So we've had a chance to look at both of those plans. And included in the packet, you would see the recommended updates for the ACOP and the administrative plan. I will defer to you whether or not you want me to kind of go through them. If you've had a chance, I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding anything that's on the list at this point in time.
What you're recommending is consistent with other agencies, I'm sure.
Right. The consultant that we use works with over 100 different housing authorities, large and small. So what we're asking for is really consistent. Some of it is required per changes in HUD, like the flat rent, this and that. But some of it is looking at the needs of the community here in Alton Mall also.
Questions, Counsel?
Does your public hearing on 26th for both Elizabeth Heights and Amherst or?
Correct. We do one, one public hearing for both sites, correct.
I'm just thinking the timing is great.
We, we actually as staff, we started looking at this back before December. But we spent a lot of time in our December retreat, our staff retreat. And of course, as I said before, we're not allowed to make any changes of policy until we have that public hearing that comes before City Council. So we're at that stage right now.
Counsel, have any more questions? Okay.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you. Number eleven, Department Spotlight, Public Works Department.
Mayor and City Council, so, this is the first of many to come in terms of, um, highlighting all the work that is done by our different departments. If you will recall, back in twenty nineteen, when we had a different budget planning process, all of the different departments came before you and spoke about what their needs were. And even though we've moved from that and we have streamlined our process, what's missing is the opportunity for department heads to get in front of you and sort of highlight what's going on in their departments and what they have plans for in terms of the future. And so, we've heard from departments that they want that opportunity, and I believe I've heard from Council as well saying we would like to hear more and see more from the departments, um, about what's going on in their areas. And so, because it's, uh, National Public Works Week, we decided that it made sense for Public Works to be our first spotlight department. And, um, all of the, uh, future presentations should follow the same sort of structure in terms of a general overview of the department and their services, um, their budget, their accomplishments for this year, and their goals for next year. So Ross is gonna kick us off, and, um, we have a calendar for the next several months for our subsequent departments. So we're hoping that this is something that Council will appreciate in terms of providing additional education around what our departments do every day.
Something like being a guinea pig on a new presentation to get started on, so. Um, again, National Public Works Week, so it was just ironic that, that, uh, this would be, uh, my chance to spotlight the department that I am fortunate to manage for the city. Mr. Drive? Not sure. There's a lot of this I may have to... So, Public Works, um, and what I'll do, my, my, my plan with this is just a high-level overview. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. What I'm gonna do is break it down into divisions, uh, for what I'm responsible for, and I'll just pause after each overview of each division. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, if not, we'll just move right along. So, overall, um, departmental overview and responsibilities. The Public Works Department, we operate our city operations warehouse facility. That's where we keep up the city's inventory. I oversee the city fleet maintenance department. We also have our city street and right-of-way maintenance division. Um, right under that, kind of a sister division, will be our downtown property maintenance crew. We also are responsible for solid waste disposal and recycling, um, at our landfill facility. One of the other things that falls under my department's responsibility is oversight of the curbside solid waste, um, collection and recycling collection with our contract with waste management. As far as an organizational chart, it's a lot of blue squares to look at. Overall, we have thirty-nine total employees, departmental lot. And currently, right now, I think we only have one vacancy out of those thirty-nine, and that's in the street division. So going into our divisions of, I wanted to highlight a little bit of the, the Public Works Administration office side of things. Currently, right now, we have three full-time employees. We provide oversight and direction over the warehouse, fleet maintenance, street divisions, solid waste facility, and we also provide oversight over our, uh, waste management contract, uh, with our curbside collection. We oversee personnel and safety policies and procedures. Uh, we maintain work order requests, we receive, uh, compliments and complaints from citizens and residents, um, from time to time. Um, and then we, we, we go from there with our work order system, and we oversee the daily operations of all our divisions and, uh, look for efficiencies throughout everyone. Uh, we also monitor the purchasing, we do budget analysis and oversight, as well as, uh, budget planning and recommendations when it comes down to budgeting. So, what I've done here for each division, I've, I'm, I'm showing you the, just our annual budget, where we are currently with the, this year's highlights and public administration. Our twenty twenty-one budget was five thousand, six hundred, two, five hundred thousand, five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, eight hundred eighteen. Seems high for just a small, three-person division. The bulk of that, probably three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars actually pays for the waste management contract. That comes out of the admin budget, just, just one little note. Um, some of this year's highlights, um, we had success, uh, in conversations with you all, with Council, uh, with the initiation of the stormwater management plan discussions, and we're in the, and approval, and now we're in the implementation phase with stormwater management. We currently are scheduling training and educational opportunities for our departmental staff. Tonight was a perfect example of the Rhodes Scholars Program. And continued recruit, recruitment and hiring of a diverse and experienced staff. Just this past year alone, out of our thirty-nine employees, I think we've hired nine new people in Public Works throughout Public Works Department. So that's almost a third of our staff are brand-new employees just in this past year. So, um, we work really hard on recruitment with that. Any questions on city admin, I mean, uh, Public Works admin? We'll keep moving on. So our first division, uh, city warehouse operations. This is our, um, inventory shipped and receiving. We have two full-time employees there, and they provide services necessary for all operation of all city departments. Um, we inventory, inventory for several divisions, uh, primarily public utilities, the electrical division, water and sewer, public works, some landfill, and then we also inventory and warehouse office supplies and janitorial supplies there for everyone in the city. The warehouse was built in nineteen seventy-four and is located on thirteen and a half acres, and is secured by two electronic access controlled drive-through gates and one access-controlled personnel manual gate. Those gates were just implemented this past year, well, with the access control measures on. The division serves as a central storage facility for approximately three million dollars worth of inventory. Uh, warehouse personnel is responsible for, uh, the receiving and inventory and this with our inventory software. Um, and they're also responsible for maintaining the facilities and grounds while they're there. Another responsibility of our warehouse personnel is the, uh, fuel system and fuel monitoring. They, they monitor what fuel goes to each department through the software that we have there. And their budget is funded through several allocations, mainly, um, well, I won't say mainly, it's probably split twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, and twenty, between general fund, electrical, water and sewer, and the landfill. All four of those budgets fund the landfill, I mean, the warehouse budget. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the warehouse, uh, operations was one hundred and sixty-four thousand, and our highlights this year, like I had mentioned, is our access security, uh, security measures. That was funded through Council last year. We do, we now have, um, all manual gates to where it's either a key code that an employee can key in, or it's accessed by badge, or now we've just got some new software getting put in, and a new receiver put in to where we can put stickers on our vehicles and equipment, to where when they drive up to the gate, it'll automatically read and the gate will automatically open. That hasn't been implemented yet, we're in the process of getting it installed right now. We upgraded our fuel access station. Uh, years ago, we used to have the old key fobs where you would have to push in the key, enter your vehicle number and your I D number. Now we have, uh, access to fuel cards, to where you just swipe, and it, and each card is billed to each department. We've upgraded those. Um, we just recently did a diesel fuel tank clean that probably hadn't been done in years. Uh, we were noticing some equipment failures based on bad fuel, and when we did some reports and we ran some data, our diesel fuel tank, the ten thousand gallon tank, had a lot of sludge and water in it, so we had to contract it out to get the tanks cleaned, which we hope will, in the long run, is gonna help us out on our equipment maintenance affairs. We've recently updated our inventory software, our loss software is what the guy's scanning all our, uh, receivables there. And also, we have done some improved ground maintenance this year. I don't know if you all have noticed, but as you write down twenty-four, twenty-seven, heading west out of town, uh, the whole, the old hedge row across the fence, it was replaced, uh, early last, well, late last summer, going into fall. We took out the old wax barrels, put new, new shrubs there, and, uh, looks, uh, looks a lot better. So, that, that's one of the, some of our highlights for this year. Any questions on warehouse operations?
Did you experience any issues last week, uh, with the fuel inventory?
With the fuel inventory?
With the gas.
Sure.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, uh, we did not. Uh, fortunately, you know, our tanks are large enough to where, when we do order, uh, especially with gas, now diesel fuel, we never had any problems because really, we've gone away from more diesel, um, vehicles. Uh, we, we keep our diesel tank at around a quarter to a half full all the time, we never fill it ten thousand gallons. Our gas tank, when we do fill it up, it normally will last us about three weeks. So fortunately, we had just had a fill-up before the cyber attack, and so we were still looking at about the one, the one and a half week of surplus there, so we weren't too concerned. Good question.
There were some cities that were, and towns.
Yes, there were. We did run a little low on diesel fuel at the landfill, um, and our supplier was lucky enough to get us a half a load delivered on Saturday down there, so we, we did okay at landfill.
You mentioned you had to clean that tank out, and not running it at a lower level, does that allow you to put a type of additive in there to break down?
We are, we're currently talking with vendor now, we're going to start a additive preventative maintenance program now, where we do, we are gonna add additives to where we disperse any condensation that's left in there. Really, I think it was just over the years, the sludge that had accumulated in there. The sludge with water formed a lot of algae, that was our problem, was the algae in there, but it's all been cleaned now, so we're in good shape. Any other questions, ware- warehouse? Okay, city fleet maintenance. Small text, lot of information. The city fleet maintenance has four full-time employees, and we service and repair over four hundred vehicles and pieces of equipment that's owned by the city. The division's responsible for keeping our fleet operational, including police cars, fire and ladder trucks, electrical line trucks, backhoes, dump trucks, personnel vehicles, et cetera. Each employee in our fleet maintenance shop is trained to become a North Carolina state certified inspector, so all of our state inspections are done in-house at our fleet maintenance shop. The current fleet maintenance shop was built in nineteen seventy-nine and has four bays for mechanics to do repairs and maintenance. Currently, there are no service bays with adequate height, adequate height or width for it to fully accommodate some of the city's equipment. As you know, we've put in the budget for a couple of years where we, we're gonna have to address this before long. Uh, fire trucks, electrical line trucks, dump trucks, and other large pieces of equipment are repaired outside, whenever they're in need of service maintenance. Only one bay can accommodate a piece of equipment over twelve-foot height. Fleet maintenance staff keep pace with the ever-changing technology for a very diverse citywide fleet. Training and educational opportunities are offered to allow fleet maintenance staff to become certified experts in their field. That's one thing that I will give, um, Terry Underwood credit for. He's been very active, even with COVID in this past year. Um, he has given our, all of our fleet maintenance, um, technicians opportunities to go get A S C certified. Uh, we do have two right now that are going through the, um, safety, um, emergency equipment, fire trucks, pump trucks, and those type of things. There are certifications out there for those as well, so COVID put a hurt on them a little bit last year, but hopefully going into this year, that's gonna be one of our priorities, is getting them more certified to have a more diverse fleet. Um, some primary fleet services include preventative maintenance services for all vehicles and equipment, warranty records and retention, state contract tire purchasing, replacing and rotation, as well as computerized balancing, safety light kit installations, and minor and major repairs. And I think they, Dylan, could probably speak on behalf of the safety light kit installations. Our crew, it takes them some time, but they have gotten where they're going, all of our police car safety kit installations, and I think they do an excellent job of that, saves us a little bit of money there. The maintenance shop is funded in part by the general fund, electrical fund, water and sewer fund, and landfill fund. So that whole fund is allocated together between all of those. Quick on the trigger here. The FY twenty twenty-one budget, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And some of our fiscal year highlights I just mentioned, software upgrades, that's one thing that, um, our, our fleet maintenance staff has really pushed me on. I'm not a mechanic, I can pretend to be, but I'm not, but one thing that they did need and one thing that they have built up over the past few years is diagnostic software. We have a diverse fleet, we have Chevrolets, we have Fords, we have Dodge, we have Cat backhoes, we have John Deere backhoes, we have Bobcat skid steers. All of these pieces of equipment are computerized pretty much now, especially the newer pieces. So one thing that they've really been, uh, encouraging us to move forward with is, is the technology and the software to be able to diagnose a lot of these computer warning signs whenever they come on, so they, they've really done well with that this past year. Um, vehicle-specific diagnostic equipment to meet demands for our diverse fleet and vehicles. One of the big ones that we just got recently is, is the Dodge. There's a module with Dodge that they're very proud of, and a lot of it is because of the police department with those, uh, police cars. So, and I think Dodge knows that too. So, one, uh, improved efficiency measures and P M maintenance service, uh, one thing I'll give Terry Underwood kudos to, they have, they have refurbished the lower oil pit change shop, and they are, they've gotten quicker and quicker on being able to do our P M maintenance tests now. Building improvements in the wash pit and the oil change bay, that's one of the things we just mentioned. Um, and then the purchase of a hydraulic hose crimping machine tool and fittings for heavy equipment repairs. One of the biggest issues we have with heavy equipment and down equipment is just the busted hydraulics. And right now, we've just purchased the new crimping tool to be able, where we can make those repairs in-house. Hopefully, we can get them done in a faster manner than having to contract it out to a contractor that might have to come from Greensboro just to fix the hydraulics. So that's some of our highlights this year for fleet maintenance.
Ross, with four employees and four hundred vehicles, are you able to maintain us on, on time schedule with preventive maintenance?
No. We just, we just aren't.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We've done, we've done some research, and we've asked, I mean, and again, it's, it's hard to say that you, you could add ten mechanics and still probably not be able to get everything on time in a timely manner. Uh, depending on, and that's, that's one of the struggles with fleet maintenance staff that we've got now, is just how they prioritize their repairs. Uh, sometimes you have big repairs that come in, they may have time to fix that repair at that time, but then if you have three other vehicles come on top of you, we, it's, sometimes it's just a balancing act. But we have asked other municipalities on what their staffing level is based on the type of equipment, and it, and it varies, it varies.
But, but a follow-up to that, if I might, but you're, you, as I saw earlier, I think on the previous slide, the preventive maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, oil changes and those, you're able, are you able to do that?
Yes, now, we, we can meet most preventive maintenance P M's. Now, when you say in a timely manner, or can, there are times where Terry might have to say, hey, you know, bring it back in two weeks, we're back up right now, but, but we did, we will, we will do our best to meet all the P M maintenance on that, yes. Now, general repairs, there's a lot of times just repairs we may have to subcontract down.
They'll run forever, Nikki, won't they?
We hope, that's the goal. Any other questions with fleet maintenance? All right, moving right along, streets and right-of-way maintenance. The street division currently has sixteen full-time employees and one vacancy. This division provides safe and clean streets, sidewalks, and right-aways within the city limits of Alamo. Areas of responsibility include a lot, uh, these are just some of the high, highlights that we really do the most of. Maintains approximately a hundred and twenty miles of city streets, sidewalks, curb and gutters, storm drain, and shoulders and right-ways. Uh, manages and oversees the annual pavement maintenance program of resurfacing and micro-surfacing streets. Along, also maintaining, a lot of you may not know this, we have a little over seven miles of gravel roads that, that the city maintains. Street signs are made and installed in our sign shop, uh, street line striping, uh, is also completed in the street division. We replace and maintain, uh, sidewalks and curb and gutter, we construct important driveway entrances as well. The city, we mow our own right-aways, and we also were contracted out with the D O T to mow their right-ways as well. So, all D O T streets and all city streets are maintained by us. Uh, we assist with road closures for meeting downtown events, we operate the vacuum truck on ditched right-ways and the street sweeper truck along curb and gutter streets, including the N C D O T streets. We also have a contract with the D O T to sweep their state highways and state roads, as long as there's curb and gutter there. Uh, storm and/or disaster response and cleanup is another priority for us. Well, down trees across the road, Public Works Department gets the call to come out and get the trees. Stormwater maintenance on structures within the city right-ways is another responsibility that we have. The street division is, uh, funded through the general fund and pow bill fund, so it is a blended, uh, budget between... between power bill funds and general fund dollars.
An off-the-wall question. You mow the grass on the right-of-ways.
Yes.
Without any backing equipment when you run over a paper bag or whatever, it goes everywhere. And we ever thought about a sweep, did they even make a sweeper you could put behind that piece of equipment that would actually pick that up as you mow without dispersing it?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of. Nothing that would gather litter behind the mowing traffic, not that I know of.
So why did I pretend?
Yeah, get that. Right-of-way. Some people may not know what right-of-way is and how far right-of-way extends. Can you give a 30,000-foot overview?
That's a big question.
I know it is because, because some right-of-way is, like you have said to me, six feet off the road, off the side of the road, okay? But sometimes our right-of-way is greater than that, isn't that right?
And that's why it would be a hard question to answer. Because every, every street is different. It all depends on how it was deeded or platted years ago, or even new development now. You know, that's one thing that we can regulate now with new development is we generally have a minimum right-of-way or a maximum. It all depends. So, you know, right-of-ways vary. Most of the time, if you're dealing with internal downtown district streets that have sidewalks, our rule of thumb is it's the back of the sidewalk. If there's not sidewalks there, a lot of times you can say, well, where are the utility poles are? But, you know, to give you an honest answer on width, true width, we would have to pull out maps. And, you know, that's when you're really getting down to the details.
You've told me that before, but I want to make sure all my cohorts.
Yeah, and it's not the same. It's not a cookie cutter. Every right-of-way in the city is 50 feet wide. That's not, that's just not the case. So budgeting, this year's budget, the 2021 budget for the street right-of-ways, general fund, it was $1,103,000. And our power bill funding for this year was budgeted $576,000, which is a total of $1,707,000 and some change. So our fiscal year highlights this year that we've accomplished so far, we did get our vac oil truck refurbished. It's, it's up and running pretty decent right now. There's still some kinks and some bugs that we, that we're trying to work out. But overall, it's been up and running for the past few months now. Our downtown street parking implementations, you know, with council's approval, we've been able to restripe and re-mark a lot of our downtown streets to meet some parking demand. That's been a success for us. We're proud of. The downtown walking path improvements, you know, with Lisa with Parks and Rec and with Kevin and Clint on his own help, we, you know, we were able to implement the walking paths around, starting from the YMCA park. A lot of people don't realize, but we did have to add some additional sidewalks around town to connect some broken areas where these paths were. So our concrete crew did a good job of that. The new Alamoor Police Department sidewalks and parking lot, we did a lot of work around the new Alamoor PD, starting down actually from, from old Charlotte Road on North First Street, or South First Street, all the way up to South Street and up to Second Street. If you all remember, they were the old brick paver sidewalks that were put in back in the 70s. We removed all those bricks and put in brand-new sidewalk around. So that was a huge accomplishment for the street division this year to renovate that sidewalk. The annual, let's see, that's it. The annual street pavement maintenance, we just finished up micro-surfacing last week. They finished up early last week with that. So we did the two-inch resurfacing this year, along with the micro-surfacing, that's done. And then the downtown vitality enhancements, I tie in the sidewalk enhancements, just like around the police station, just like I do with this. The fiber sidewalk renovations, we were able to finish that this year from Third Street down to Five Points and up Fourth Street. Along with that, with the South Street renovations that we improved, we put in infrastructure to put future lights on trees there, and then the new street trees. I think we planted well over 40 trees this year in downtown Alamoor, new trees, along South First, South Street, and then the new trees going down East Main Street going towards fiber.
Who's doing our micro-surfacing?
Slurry Paper's got the contract this year.
Are they out, that one out in Virginia?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do we ever go by and behind them and take a look at what the street looks like?
Yes, for the most part we didn't. I mean, unless there's just complaints, you know, that we don't, I haven't received any complaints this year from, from any residents. But we do follow up.
Follow up on the power bill, on the power bill money. That $576, is that all, is that all used for paving?
No.
Okay.
The power bill budget, if you remember, it is similarly broken down in our general fund budget. The power bill, now there are legal, allowable legal expenses that only power bill can pay for.
Right.
So salaries is one, obviously, uniforms, health insurance, those type things, asphalt. You can purchase equipment as long as it is street-related. And we do get audited by the state with a power bill. Yes, to make sure we are spending that money appropriately. And if I'm not mistaken, that $576,000 last year was, did not equate to what we received. I think we actually had some money in fund balance that we had to appropriate to add to that.
To make it there.
Yeah, because I, I think last year, Michael might have corrected me, we found out later that they were actually going to cut a little bit of the funding. And it was just a little over $400,000 we received in this year's budget.
Because too much of it went to street maintenance, or street paving.
Any other questions? Street and right-of-way. Okay. So downtown property maintenance. Again, tonight I introduced you Kevin Luthen. He is our top guy that does, takes care of all of our downtown property. But they are kind of a subdivision of the street division. The downtown crew right now consists of three full-time employees. Their main priorities are to maintain all areas of downtown, including city hall landscaping, the Alamoor Police Department landscaping. They maintain the clean sidewalks in the business district, mow all the parks, which is a portion of the Greenway and Isaiah Park. Shoulders and utility strips, they maintain that. They water the trees, they water the flowers, they empty trash cans, and they actually trim trees when they have to. Other duties performed by the downtown crew, they maintain and repair and replace all the tree lights that you see downtown with, which is an underappreciated task that a lot of people take for granted because just keeping those tree lights lit up on a constant basis is fun for those guys. They maintain all ADDC properties in the downtown commercial district, including Market Station, Memorial Garden, and Port Square. They maintain two cemeteries, on the P D Avenue and one on Woodhurst Lane. And they assist with the ADDC design committee with following spring plantings around downtown, as well as maintaining the hanging baskets and the planter areas around town. So they have a lot on their plate, especially during the spring and summer.
How often do you get to the, I guess it's the old Alamoor Cemetery on the P D Avenue, I don't know what it's called.
Depending on the season, I would say, I'm not sure of their schedule, but I would say they move it at least once a week in the busy, in the busy season.
I have had some difficulties after that.
Yeah. The downtown property maintenance budget is strictly general fund. There is a business district tax that I think helps fund this. I'm not sure how all that's broken out, but there is a portion of that that helps fund these, these services. The budget for 2021 was $151,000 and some change. And our highlights this year is we were able to get our guys a new landscaping truck, which was needed. The old diesel Suzuki was starting to have coal crank issues. The new Alamoor Police Department landscaping vegetation edits, although the, although the landscaping was contracted out, our landscape crews are the ones who are going to be maintaining this, and they're the ones that had a lot of input over the side of that. We think it looks great around the new police station. And we also had the addition of a new maintenance worker because, you know, we've acquired a lot of properties in downtown and more facilities to maintain. You just can't expect two people to do it all. So those are some of the highlights that we've had this year. Any questions on downtown property maintenance? Those guys do a really good job. I think they're, they're.
They're up early in the morning.
Sometimes they're, they're the unsung heroes of keeping downtown clean a lot of times. All right. Solid Waste Facility and Recycling Center, this is our landfill. The solid waste facility and recycling center is located on Stony Gap Road. And believe it or not, there are a lot of people that still don't know that the city of Alamoor owns the, owns the landfill. It's, I guess we all take it for granted. It's permitted to operate by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. It's what we used to call D E R, but it's N C D E Q now, and it's permitted to only accept waste generated in the county. We're not allowed to take trash from outside the county. Some of the information there, the total acreage of the landfill facility is 550 acres. But tied over, we have 13 full-time employees, and our operating schedule is 7:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. And now we are open the first Saturday of each month from 7:30 to 12:00. The only day the landfill is closed, it's three holidays, New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Besides that, all other holidays the landfill is operating as normal. There's two landfill operating sites at our facility. One is a subtitle D, line landfill that accepts municipal solid waste, which is what we call MSW, and then construction and demolition, C and D. The solid waste facility also conducts the following activities on site. We collect tires. We have white goods collections, which is your refrigerators, your stoves, your hot water heaters, washers and dryers, those type things. Yard waste collection, land cleaning debris, wooden leaf, mulch sales is something else we do. The recycling center collects the following: batteries, cardboard, electronics, glass, metal, paper, plastic containers, plastic rigid, rigid plastics, used oil filters, latex paint. And with the latex paint, we actually have a swap shop down there. You can go take off the latex paint. You won't drop it off, or you can go down there and get all, you won't bring them home, if it's usable. So anybody that you need a art project with, send them to the landfill.
I think one thing people may, may not be aware of is with the white goods, when you buy, you pay the tax. And when you go to the landfill, you do not have to.
You do not have to pay.
Over the gate, over the scale, you can just go right in.
That's right.
And they're extremely helpful.
That's right. That is something that a lot of people don't know. When you buy a new washing machine, refrigerator, you pay a white good tax, and then we get refunded back those dollars to the landfill budget.
So what do you think of all the stuff down there? Don't leave it on the side of the road in Alamoor County.
That's right. And I'll give a shout-out. Michael Barfield's here tonight, and he's one of our workers at the landfill and been there for a while. I told him he could go home and go, he said, I just want to hang out and see what's going on. I applaud him for that. It's good. So tell everybody I gave y'all a shout-out. One thing that a lot of people do not know as well, and I have to probably have this conversation with many residents, I don't know, half a dozen times a month, the landfill is an enterprise fund. It solely operates on the fees that we charge when people come across the scale. It is not taxpayer-dollar funded. So that's, that's one tidbit of information. So whatever we charge in disposal fees or return taxes, that's how we have to operate. So as far as our budget for this year and our highlights, the 2021 budget was $2,830,000, $2,830,421. So our fiscal year highlights, and I will say this, as of right now, our revenues are expected to be at an all-time high, over $3 million. COVID had a, COVID had a big impact on that, but the economy as well. MSW tonnage is really high, but C and D tonnage has, has gone out the roof, especially this year, which is a good sign of the economy. We've had a lot of construction going on around town. We've had a lot of remodeling going on, and that's what goes into the C and D landfill site. So we've seen an increase in both landfill facilities with the tonnages. We did some scale house updates and renovations. We had the successful removal of our last rain flap in the Phase Two MSW line landfill to help us increase space for disposal. And then one of the biggest things that I felt like was an accomplishment this year is we have finally closed out both of our projects, the bleacher force mains, and the employment building.
What we do with those old cars, are they being used somewhere else that all that stuff up to, which has? Then we have the multi-hub we've talked, what was that?
We still have it. We still, and as of right now, we do have the tractor trailer. The tractor trailer still runs a little bit. We can, we can move trailers around for the city now, but we've still kept the tanker just in case of emergency because there, there may be times if our force main goes down, and there might be pump issues, we're hanging on to that just as an emergency. Emergency way of being able to transport bleachers if we have to.
They're not pretty good anymore.
That's right. That's right. Any questions on the solid waste facility, landfill? So just at a high level, and this year, it's like I was trying to explain to Nikki, it's hard for me to talk about goals and priorities when we haven't got next year's budget adopted, but I've got, I've got a big wish list. But I didn't want to go over that until we really start getting into the discussions of budget. But just to hit the high levels, the goals and priorities of the Public Works Department overall is to continue talent and compensation management. These are priorities that council has set for us. And so with that, as far as talent and compensation management, one of my goals is to continue training and educational offerings for our employees. Again, I've talked a little bit about the road scholars program for the street division. I've talked about our mechanics and their ASC certifications that they have. Our landfill staff, we've budgeted money in next year's budget to be able to send them to some manager operation training to operate landfills, molo training certifications. Those are some of my high priorities because my goal is to have a good, diverse workforce and a well-educated workforce to be able to move public works department in the future. One of the other priorities for council is organizational capacity. One of those that falls under that is the street pavement assessment. I've asked for money in this year's budget to do another street assessment. Our last assessment was done in 2015. So if that's funded for next year, we'll be able to have our engineers come in, do a whole nother evaluation of our city infrastructure on our streets. They'll be able to come back and give us a report and give us some real data, real-time data from six years ago on the condition of what our streets look like. And then we'll be able to make some education decisions based on that, on how we're going to move forward. Another priority is safety and security. And again, kudos to council, our stormwater planning program. This was something that's been needed. We, you know, flooding has been an issue for years around here. I look forward to working on this project and hopefully move the city of Alamoor forward in the future with a new stormwater management plan. Infrastructure, this goes back to pavement maintenance, our streets. My goal is to spend our money the best we can, come up with a good plan with council on how we're going to spend it and be able to address our needs moving forward. And then community and economic development is a priority of the city council, obviously. Public works plays a big part in that with place-making, obviously, the wayfinding implementation. And then like what Nikki presented today with King Allen, you know, public works is going to play a big part in implementing some of those projects. So we're excited about next year moving forward. And with that being said, that's it. We're stronger together is our slogan for National Public Works Week. And I will say, internally in our public works department, we've got some T-shirts being made up. And we did a little survey with all public work staff, and we asked for recommendations on what we wanted our internal slogan to be. And everybody came with the consensus that caring for our community was going to be our slogan for this year in our public works department. So we'll have little T-shirts made with that slogan on there. So I wanted to share that little story with you as well.
Thank you, Ross. Anybody have a question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 12, apartment unlock reports is in your agenda. Anyone have a question?
I had some questions, and I have emailed the appropriate department heads and copied council and administration.
We got those later today. So there'll be, we'll have some answers in the next day or two with some of those questions.
Moving on to consent agenda, ordinance 2121 to establish a special revenue fund for the receipt of the American Rescue Plan funds and resolution designate personnel for the American Rescue Fund program. This is an ever-evolving fund, if it appears to us, that the rules we're not exactly sure on. They came out in writing and then.
Changing.
We hear that somehow it has changed. So we can't tell you exactly how it can be spent yet, but we are doing what they recommended to do because tomorrow is the deadline to have these people designate. Council will adopt these two ordinances and resolution. Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. New business information to COVID. New business, information to covid impact utility accounts, information is in your agenda, does anyone have a question, comment?
What was, when we did all of that, was it in February that we gave the extra time to be done by May?
Yes, to be done by April, April is the deadline, so the bill is coming due in May.
I think we may have a lot of success in getting some of it, because you can see, we've got a lot of money we'll continue to struggle to get, but we'll try to dent that off to get it from now on.
Well, it's come down substantially.
Substantially. Okay, coming around the table, first thing, cog meeting, I didn't know, how do you, our council is going to attend? You will raise your hand, please.
That, that's next.
That's Tuesday the twenty-fifth, week from tomorrow, be at Market Station.
Six, six, six-thirty?
Uh, six-thirty. Okay, I got Benton, Martha Sue, Martha Hughes.
It's a possibility right now, I'm not sure.
That's it, and myself, Mike.
Okay, Mike.
Okay.
And do we have a program?
Uh, the, the ten program right here, we talked about the American Rescue Fund, that's what several of them wanted to talk about, and that's what we, we had mentioned. So we talked about that, and hopefully we'll have some more direction by then.
And you know that cog has got, Geraldine has a wonderful presentation on that, that we might get. We'll see her tomorrow though, will we not, or not? Okay, that may be offline, we can talk about her even maybe presenting, or additionally presenting.
Okay.
Excuse me, what time was that, Mr. Mayor?
Six-thirty. We need to talk about the dais, we were planning to come back to the dais on June the seventh. Owen is in the process right now of making some I T changes. We can still come back, but he will not be complete with those I T changes by then. His long-term plan is he will get rid of the moniker in front and do something else with it, we'll be redoing some up here, and he's making all arrangements for that, but the equipment will not be in by the seventh. Does council wish to consider staying like we are, or all come back to the dais, or wait until he gets his, his equipment? All right, it looks like we have a pretty much a consensus there, we're gonna wait until you complete Owen before we move back. Thank you. Come around, Ms. Ferris.
Just want to remind everyone to please be sure to remember to bring your draft of recommended budget tomorrow night, as well as some supplemental information I distributed tonight. I'll have also presentation overview, other supporting documentations tomorrow, but if you please bring what I've given you tonight, as well as the draft budgets from last council meeting.
Ms. Hughes.
I just would like to tell Ross, that was a wonderful presentation. You know, I've been serving on council for a few years, but it's nice to see a reminder of what each department does, and I know that took some time to do, but very well presented, and I appreciate you and Nikki getting that together. I look forward to the future departments, thank you.
Mr. Aldridge.
Yeah, a couple things, I know that, I know that we've picked up, we've done a really good job picking up a lot of the blue clothing and shoe dumpsters or whatever, containers, but I know there's still one out at, out at Walmart there, over beside the shoe store, there's still one there, I noticed one on Highway Fifty-two North at the Food Lion. I'm also seeing some, some signs on one of our telephone poles, we build houses, it's like a two-five-two area code, so we can just.
Pulled down about five or six of those today already.
You what?
Pulled down about five or six of those today along Montgomery, and we're just trying to keep an eye out for those.
Yeah, there's one on Highway Fifty-two, I saw it stop like there.
Okay, and then, thanks for the donation box, I wanted to wear those other two.
Yeah, okay. Also, what is our, and Kevin, I'm glad you're here, what is our current, what is our current policy on, on grass? Like, if somebody's in violation, can you give me a quick rundown of what, of how long, and what's the notice that goes out? How long do they have to get the grass cut, and so on?
It's fifteen inches and fifteen days.
Okay.
It's over fifteen inches, we issue them the notice, they get fifteen days from that to take care of it. If it's not done at that point, then we go ahead and start scheduling, we either get some public works or a contractor to go out there and take care of it.
Is, is fifteen days, is that something that was done by a previous council, or is that kind of a, I mean?
It's, it's a default that a lot of cities use, I don't, it's definitely not the minimum you can use. I mean, there's other places that do a week, there's other places that do ten days. It's really up to y'all with what you wanna do, but I think the idea was to give them two weeks to get somebody to take care of it. It can make a big difference sometimes, because by the time that we've been notified of it, we go out there, we look at it, we cite them, we send them the notice, they have two weeks to do something with it, and then we have to schedule somebody to go and take care of it. It can be three weeks plus, and you can go from having a yard that needs to be mowed, to a yard that needs to be basically pushed off.
Oh yeah, and that's, and that's, that's what we're dealing with, is, you know, once, once it's fifteen inches high, they have fifteen more days to get another plus to your point, you have to reach out and get somebody scheduled to go out there. It's, it's, you know, we got all sorts of stuff, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm not worried enough to know, but we as a council, I would consider, you know, it's that time of the year, and like I said, it's fifteen inches high, and then you have to give it a fifteen-day grace period, plus then you have to let somebody mow it, it's, it's a farce, I mean, it's, it's out of control.
I, I agree.
That's it.
Mr. Towne.
All right, just like Councilmember Hughes said, I like the direction we're going in with the department spotlights. That was a great presentation, Ross, I think it's gonna be beneficial just to have that information. And if you would, tomorrow if you think about it, please email that to council, because it wasn't in our agenda packet. I like to have that for reference. And just, only other thing I'll add is, to whoever the organizers were for last week's, I didn't personally make it, but I heard a lot of positive comments about the employee lunching abroad, you know, from a variety of different people, everybody spoke highly, and I think they were very appreciative of that.
Ms. Whibley. Ms. Lowery.
What did you, how did you decide to deal with the signs, the complaints that you had on the signs that people were putting out in the neighborhoods?
Are you talking about the signs on the poles that you were talking about?
Adopt strict signs.
Adopt strict signs, we, uh, we did not make any policy change. We're handling, only case by case, this is, if we put them out and somebody complains about it, we can pay them back, that's up to council at that time. That's the only one we've ever had a complaint about, so we, we did not make any changes. Have you had a complaint on another one?
No.
Okay. If you do, let us know, we'll, we'll look at it. Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Dry.
Once again, thank you very much, that, from where we were back years ago, to seeing what you have now, I think we're, that's gonna be impacting for us, gonna help us out a lot more considering a lot of presentations. And, yeah, we're on the right course, all we gotta do now is make sure that we can deliver what we need to be able to deliver to help you out.
Ms. Holland.
A couple of things, first of all, I hope you, my coworkers up here read the police report that thirteen thousand grams last month, take back drugs, that you did with one of the, with one of the drugstores, right? With medical pharmacy, so, and that's a lot of, that's a lot of drugs out on the street with both, over the counter as well as prescription. A couple of things, I've been told that, right now we're in the middle of senior games, and I've been told, was told several times last week at the Y M C A by several senior game participants of how well they are going and how much fun folks have, and just, that's another thing that Parks and Rec does. And just out of the way for that, y'all have been super busy, along that same line, Saturday, last Friday night, strike that, last Thursday night at Market Station was music of Thursday nights at Market Station, and that will continue through the first or second week in July, every Thursday night at seven-thirty. I would just suggest, or just offer to people watching this, as well as council, it's a great place to be on a Thursday night, different music every week. Then Friday night, people had different guesses on how many people we had at Market, out at City Lake Park, but one person gave this analogy, when we were looking at the alleyway and you saw the rendering of people at different spots, on that rendering of the alleyway just now, there was a person that was at City Lake Park on Friday night that was sitting at a spot where he and his family could see the lake, they could see the park, they could see the amphitheater and the hill, and that particular person said, right now, I look, I am thinking that I am seeing the rendering of a new creation. And I said, what do you mean by that? And he said to me, it's like there are people, they're not all in one spot, they're all over the place with the food trucks and up the hill, and, and, you know, Dan and I were debating on how many people were there. I had no idea, but I would guess that there were at least twice the number as were there the month before. So we probably had between eight, eight hundred and a thousand folks out there at different spots last week. And a lot of those people were not from Alamo, but came to enjoy the facility that we had out there. That was on Friday night, and then Saturday, there were cars parked all on Main Street. I mean, there were a lot of people downtown Saturday. This was part of the, something that Parks and Rec and A D D C and the special, or is it Parks and Rec?
And Tiffany's.
And Tiffany's did with that car show, so it brought a lot of people to town, people are ready to get out. So just know that every, every Thursday night, there's stuff going on down at Market Station, and there are people that, and I know Lisa has heard this, that wanna do food truck Friday, every Friday, if we only had the food trucks available, there are people that would come, that's how bad people wanna be out. So things are really, really choking out there, and I just commend all that you all are doing in Parks and Rec, because I mean, there's been a lot going on lately, so out of the way there. There are two other things that I have. I would also suggest, Michael, I don't know if you mentioned, I know, I think that Nikki reminded us to look at our priority areas, and you all sent that back to us again, didn't you?
I sent you the priority areas highlighted that had the items that were in the budget and those that were either not requested or did not get funded in the budget.
And I think that, but I think we requested this after last meeting, and I think that's something else that folks might wanna bring if you got it, and I think Nikki, you sent it back again out, or at least I got it from you, I think.
Yeah, I sent it to you, I forwarded you, and Michael sent it to the city council in February.
In February, so we got this originally in February, so I'd say if you hadn't looked at it since February, you need to look at that again, because that talks about the priorities that we talked about in February. Something else that I'd like for people to bring along, Michael, is capital improvement plan, because this is something that we would have approved last year in May, and to my fellow council members, this was our plan last year, what we were wanting to do with capital needs. There's no use in my mind for us to plan if we're gonna do something if we're not gonna do it. So I have not taken the time to compare that with the budget, but I would say if we, this is something we wanna work on, and it's something we update regularly, then we need to look at that too. Thank you.
Here it now, now entertain a motion that we adjourn until tomorrow night at four P M for a budget work session. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second, by Councilmember Lowery, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.